Good afternoon, folks. It's June 18th, 2013. This is now 6:04 at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. We are now in session. I'd like to call this order and start our invocation with Father Stuart Smith with the Gospel Shepherd Episcopal Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledges of the Texas flag. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you're the giver of all wisdom. We thank you for the blessings of a free country, the liberty of self-government, the freedom of assembly, for all of the precious heritage that we have as a free people. We thank you especially for the city council. We pray for Ricky, our mayor, as he continues to recuperate, strengthen, and heal him. Pray for Nan as he serves as mayor pro tem. Pray for each member of the council. Father, you've said that if we turn to you for wisdom and ask cumbly, you'll provide it. We pray for that wisdom and discernment for each of the members of the council. Pray for a spirit of accountability and humility, to hold the responsibility heavy, but our own pride and ego lightly, so that we might be servants of yours and of the community where we serve. In this, we ask through Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. And now the Texas flag. I pledge the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Well, we've got an unusually short agenda today. Maybe we can finish up by daylight, hopefully. I'd like to start off the meeting reading a couple of proclamations here. Is Eddie Lane out there?
Right there.
Eddie, oh, I'm sorry. There he is. Eddie, come forward there if you want. I'm gonna read this proclamation to you. This proclamation reads, "Whereas for over 100 years, the Olympic movement has built a more peaceful and better world by educating young people through amateur athletes, by bringing together athletes from many countries in friendly competition, and by forging new relationships bound by friendship, solidarity, and fair play. Whereas the United States Olympic Committee is dedicated to coordinating and developing amateur athletes' activities in the United States to foster productive working relationships among post-related organizations. Whereas the city of Granbury, Texas promotes and supports the amateur athletic activities involving Olympic and paramedic sports. And whereas the city of Granbury promotes and encourages physical fitness and public participation in amateur athletic activities. Whereas the city of Granbury assists organizations and persons concerned with sports in the development of athletic programs for able-bodied and disabled athletes regardless of the age, race, or the gender. Whereas the city of Granbury is proud of reciting Olympians, Thane Baker, track and field athletes, Joe Fritz, and Eddie Lane, athletic trainers, and former Granbury resident Dana Ballmer in swimming. Whereas June 22nd is the anniversary of the founding of the modern Olympic movement, representing the date on which Congress of Paris approved the proposal of prayer de propitien to found the modern Olympics. Now therefore, I, Nan Hewlett, the mayor pro tem of the city of Granbury, do hereby proclaim with much appreciation and admiration, June 22nd, 2013, as Olympic Day." Thank you, sir. Sure, sure. That near pocket word.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, I'm here this evening something that's very dear to my heart, the Olympics. Three-time Olympian myself, I'm proud of it. If you done it, it ain't bragging. But we are having Saturday, a swim meet with the Granbury Seals to honor Dana Ballmer and to honor the modern Olympic movement, which started in 1896. We will have 600 swimmers there. I have coming three gold medal swimming athletes from my era, 68, 72, and a recent kid from 96. Doug Russell, who you may know, 68, won the fly in gold. Jim Montgomery won the 100 meter and was the first man ever to break 50 seconds in the 100 meter. And Ryan Burby swam on a medley relay in Atlanta in 96. I will have them here. Also, Thane will be here, Thane Baker, who was a gold medalist from '52, '56, and Sammy Walker, who is president of the Southwest Olympians, and an Olympian, but not a medalist in '76. I will also have here, we're just getting started on this, Matt Wood, who is the chair of the 2024 Dallas Bid Committee. And we got a pretty good shot at it this time. We ended up fifth last year in 2012, but we'll get it this time. I have for the city to fly on the flagpole out here in front, a flag that shows the participation of the city of Granbury. I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but this is the second time the city of Granbury has done this. Did it in 2010. Now, this is the third time we've had an Olympic celebration of some kind here in Granbury. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I would now like to read another proclamation here that was, that we actually accomplished today. This one here is a, is actually a resolution from the Texas 21. We had a, we had a meeting today, a quarterly, it was a regional quarterly meeting, and they have forwarded this to me. The resolution commending the city of Granbury, Texas for hosting the June 18th, 2013 Texas Texas 21 Regional Quarterly Meeting. Whereas Transportation Excellence for the 21st Century, Texas 21, is a multi-state coalition of cities, counties, private businesses, and other interested groups from around the states of Texas, Oklahoma, and Arkansas, focused on improving transportation infrastructure within states and across borders, and organized as a private non-for-the-profit corporation in Texas. And whereas the city of Granbury has continually participated as a strong active member of the Texas 21, helping to guide the transportation policies and direction of the organization as a whole. And whereas the city of Granbury remains a leader in encouraging the development of transportation and mobility resources for its citizens, the region, and the entire state. Now therefore, be it resolved by Transportation Excellence for the 21st Century that the Transportation Excellence for the 21st Century, Texas 21, hereby expresses its sincere and heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for the dedication of valuable time and resources by the Granbury City Council, especially council member Mickey Parsons, city manager Wayne McKepin, and their excellent staff in preparation for this regional quarterly meeting, and their continuing support of Transportation Excellence for the 21st Century. And that this resolution shall be circulated to interested parties, including the Texas Congressional Delegation, Governor of Texas, Lieutenant Governor, Speaker of the House, members of the Texas Legislature, Texas Transportation Commission, Executive Director of the Texas Department of Transportation, TechDoc, and Texas Municipal League, Texas Association of Counties, members of the Oklahoma Legislature, Oklahoma Department of Transportation, media, and others, and is so accordingly ordered, considered and approved by the Transportation Excellence for the 21st Century Coalition at the regular call Texas 21 meeting hosted by the Granbury, Texas this 18th day of June, 2013. Tim Wells. Thank you. Thank you, Mickey. We will now move on to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting for June 4th, 2013. Council, you've all had an opportunity to look over those minutes. Is there any changes or discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of June 4th, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
Some may.
I've got a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the deliberation agenda, first one being to consider and approve a contract of election and joint election agreement with the Hood County Election Administrator for the service in connection with the general election to be held on November 5th, 2013. Council, you've had a opportunity to look at this in your packets. It's pretty much the format that we go through every year just before the election time. As you know, we did change it to the November election time as of last year, and I believe a couple of them have already approved it. Okay. School District in Decord, Dova. So with that, council, if there's any discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract for election and joint election agreement with the Hood County Election Administrator for the services in connection with the general election to be held on November 5th, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
Some may.
I've got a motion by councilperson Parsons. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
I've got a second by a councilperson Perkel. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That does approve. Our next item is to consider and approve a resolution to close the city hall on July the 5th, 2013. I'd like to call upon Ms. Kristy Sanders to kind of elaborate on this a little bit, if she may.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Basically, what we have before us, we are all aware of the 4th of July festivities that we have coming up in a couple of weeks. The holiday, July 4th is a holiday for city employees. July 5th is not. However, we are expecting big crowds on the square due to the festivities. So it has been requested by several members of the community that we shut down city hall so that we can use that area for parking for the guests. You need to make a decision about what you want to do. We have several options we can look at, several different ways to look at it. One thing I do want to remind you of is that if we declare a holiday for city employees, any employee that works, we have to pay time and a half. And we have a tremendous amount of people who will be working. We have our parks people that'll be working, our electric people, our health inspectors, our streets, not to mention our police and our water that always work 24/7. So that is a financial consideration that we have to think about. It's at your pleasure what you want to do about it.
Kristy, do you have some idea of how much that would cost?
Well, we have done some, crunched some numbers before to see how much it would cost us in payroll a day. It's about $40,000 a day to give everybody a paid holiday. But like I said, a large number of our employees won't get a paid holiday. They'll still be working, so they'll get time and a half, plus they'll get to take their holiday later.
And our stuff that talked about it maybe would close city operations and trade Columbus Day for that...
Well, that was a suggestion that was made, but I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of the staff, and the staff are really opposed to it, and I'll tell you why. In October, there is no festival going on. So employees can plan on that holiday, and they can actually take a three-day weekend, and they can go do something. With this, a lot of our staff are gonna be working all weekend regardless. So they can't, they can't plan a holiday and go with their families because they're still gonna be working regardless of whether or not this building is open or closed. So it's really not a fair trade for the staff to trade that holiday.
What percent is gonna be working?
Well, I don't have an exact number, but I can tell you, our health inspectors will be inspecting on the square. Our electric department will be involved in setting up and monitoring the situation on the square. The streets department, the building maintenance department will be cleaning bathrooms all over town. The parks department will be maintaining facilities all over town. Of course, police and the water department never closes down. So you're talking about a pretty good percentage of the staff. I don't have an exact number, but a pretty large percentage. And the visitor center and everyone at the conference center will also be working.
It sounds like to me that 90% of the people are gonna be working.
A large percentage are. It's really just this building that we're talking about and the parking situation. We know we have to block off the far side of the parking lot over there for the police department. That's a given and happens all the time. We're really only talking about maybe one more aisle that would have to be blocked off for staff to park in if you wanted to keep this building open. Now, I will say, there's gonna be a lot of traffic in and out of here. It's an air-conditioned building. People will, there's restrooms here that'll be open, so I can't imagine someone wanting to come in here and pay their water bill that day because it'll be hard to get in and out of here. And I just don't know how that's gonna play out. I would imagine that most of the people downstairs at least would spend most of their time directing people to the restrooms and...
I'll be honest with you, I was in favor of letting them off until you told me that, you know, we're gonna have to pay them time and a half even with their day off, right? And if 90% of them, I'm looking here going, okay, we've got the electrical, we've got the police, we've got the street department, we've got the parks department, we've got the water department, we've got the electrical inspectors, Mr. Bureau, and...
A lot is on call though, right?
Well, some of them are on call, but a lot of them will be here, will just be here because there's so much going on. The water, the water and the police are 24/7, 365. They're gonna be working anyway.
Well, I was gonna say, what's the difference? There is no difference between the 4th of July and that day.
No.
I mean, if you chose to let the same people off that you let off at the 4th, you don't need additional people to clean up.
That's exactly right.
So it's the same people.
The exact same thing.
So council, I think what we're looking at is allowing the same people that we already have allowed off for the 4th of July to be off another day.
And basically, it's just to free up this parking. That is, that is the main concern, is to free up this parking.
Well, they, but, okay, I'm hearing...
Now, there will be some other individuals that if we close, you know, if we shut the city down, the warehouse might not have to come in that day. You know, there's some people at the services center who might not have to work that day or on, or on an on-call basis. So, you know, you kind of gotta do the same for everyone as you do for one location, you have to do for other locations, but...
Let's get back on track here. First of all, who gets off on the 4th?
Every, every city employee receives a holiday on the 4th of July. Now, those that have to work will get to take their holiday another day of their choosing.
Okay, so I'm hearing the council talk about the fairness of that, so I'm, what I'm trying to say is, okay, if we let them have another day off, where's the fairness come for that?
We'd also give the other employees another day off.
So it's like a comp day?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does that answer your question down there? I mean...
Well, it does mine, Mayor Pro Tem, but I'm looking at a $40,000 hit for one day. That's what she's saying.
Right.
And I'll be real honest, I was, I was all for it, Kristy, until you said...
I have to be honest.
Forty thousand, I appreciate your honesty, and that 90% of them are gonna be working anyway, and if they don't want to trade Columbia Day for it...
But if you close, you don't have to pay time and a half to those people.
They come in, you do, don't you?
No.
If we just close city hall and give everybody a free holiday, it's just a work day.
So it's no 40,000?
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
What is that, what is that figure?
Well, we don't know exactly how many people are gonna have to be called in.
What was it last year?
I have no idea. Last year was a different situation. The 4th of July was on Wednesday, and there was no question about closing two days.
It would be the same thing on the 4th. People have to come in and work.
They have to come in and work. The city operations don't stop.
I mean, if there's a water leak, then people are gonna fix the water leak.
Exactly.
If it's not, they don't have to.
Is that regular pay or time and a half?
If they come in, if they come in on a holiday, it's time and a half.
But, but they get comp, comp day?
Well, there's comp time that we try to use comp time in lieu of overtime.
Time and a half, that much.
Comp time is paid at time and a half.
Even if on Friday?
Yeah, comp time is a time.
If we said we were gonna close Friday, and they had to come in, would they get regular pay, or would they get time and a half?
They would get comp time, basically, time and a half. That's what you're...
Time and a half.
Even if we had it...
That would be one and a half.
If you're, if we're open, it's straight pay, straight time.
If they came in for two to three hours, they would get four and a half hours.
See, I just don't think it's fair to our employees because if, if we make them work, then they get paid time and a half. I mean, they don't get paid time and a half. They get regular pay.
That's true.
But if we give them a day off, we gotta pay them time and a half.
They get called in.
So, you know...
That's because they're getting called in on a holiday, and it's, they get a little extra incentive because of that.
What departments was against trading out Columbia Day for that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't count departments. I just talked to a bunch of different people, and there were people from all departments. I didn't, I don't have a specific number. I didn't keep a tally. I just went out and talked to the staff.
They had rather worked it than have a Columbia Day off, is what you're saying?
Well, yeah, because you're talking about a day when everybody's gonna be busy doing things anyway for the most part, so, and then you're taking away a full holiday that's on a weekend in October.
Well, this is on a weekend too, though.
Yes, but people are going to be here working, and they know they're going to be here working. In October, they won't be here working because there's not a festival. Well, call rotates, and when there's a big festival, more people have to be available than typically.
I would like to ask Mike Scott if it's okay, Mayor Pro Tem, what's it gonna do to him if we're open till 4:30 in the afternoon? Because that, that may have a lot of burden on there.
Councilman Allen, I don't have a problem with Mike coming up and talking about that, but the thing is, but the thing is, you know, we have a bank right next door. It's not about parking, it's not about any of that. It's about whether or not the employees should be eligible to have an additional day off because of where the holiday falls. And I mean, we did it in the corporate world all the time, but we did it prior. And I would like to suggest that in the future, that the city would take a look at their future map, our future calendars, which they're out there, and say, this, this, this year, fourth falls on this day, and so the employees will have two days off instead of one day off, and then they put that in the budget, they put that in the working, the working, you know, we didn't do that now, so now we're sitting here talking about it.
For Christmas and Thanksgiving.
I understand, and I mean...
And along them lines, I think we're still not hitting this. If we give them both days as a holiday, both days as a holiday, then it's not gonna cost us the $40,000 because more than likely, none of the people, the cleanup people are gonna be here because they wasn't here on the 4th. There's no need for them to be there for the 5th.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're gonna have to do. They're gonna have to put out...
If you had an emergency on the 4th, you would be paying them...
All the workers have to be cleaned the whole time. The health inspectors have to be out with the vendors the whole time. Yeah, but, but like the...
Well, let me, let me talk to electrical. We, we pay an on-call electrician. In the last two years, I have not had to call Tim Spragons or anybody from the city. So, I mean, we hire a guy to do that, so we've got electrical covered. And the restrooms do have to be cleaned. Frankly, most of the work is on Wednesday night and Thursday for the, that's when the most police officers and all that are gonna be out there. I frankly think if, if you're really gonna look at this in depth about the cost, I think your department heads, I agree with the city manager, most people are gonna be on call. And I frankly have been doing this eight years, and I, on the off days, the non-4th of July days, I really don't see that many city employees running around. I mean, and, and I don't think we wind up having to call a lot of them, so, but, but your city employees are a big part of this, and they do a great thing for the chamber. And I will tell you, you won't have to visit this issue again until 2017. Okay? That's the next, that's the next time that this will happen.
On the 4th?
On, on, yeah, for this day. So, because we go, next time, it'll be on Friday, so you got Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We're only doing, when, we're only doing Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Sunday will be just kind of a down day. It'll be a, and that's the reason I gave you that schedule. That'll be a beach, a church service on the, on the beach, and that's about all that's gonna go on on Sunday. And then next year, the 4th will fall on Friday, so you got Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Then it falls on Saturday, and, and then it skips Sunday due to leap year, and you go to Monday. So, so none of those, the next three years will you have to even consider it for the 4th of July. So, but to answer...
All the, all of it that are out there are the vendors on Friday, right?
I'm sorry?
You just have vendors on Fridays, right?
Yeah, we have vendors Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Well, there's some music, there's music going on, and don't forget that 1776 is going on in the courthouse.
Yeah.
We could certainly use the parking, but to answer Councilman Allen's question, I mean, we can work around it, guys. I think it's a great opportunity for you to give some pretty darn good employees a day off, is what I think. And, and I think if you really look at the people that are gonna get paid time and a half, other than maybe the police department and the, and the parks department, it's probably a pretty small number, so. But, I mean, we'll live with whatever you decide to do.
Y'all got a lot of force out on the 5th? Well, y'all have a lot of patrol officers out on the 5th? I think you're gonna have most of them on the 4th.
We may have ones who are extra, and that's efficient for us. We won't have, we have...
I think we're overestimating the impact.
No difference, no difference.
The problem with y'all giving the staff...
Take it, take it.
The feedback I got from the staff is they didn't wanna trade their October holiday for this holiday.
Why? And I'm surprised, but they would have a four-day holiday instead of a three-holiday.
That's the feedback I got. Y'all, y'all could do what you want.
I heard a lot of people say they did want a four-day holiday.
Buses a minute or something that day.
So, I'm still saying that I think...
Let's get back on track here. We're, we're just talking out of turn here. Kristy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, you got any more questions for Kristy? Now, there, as you read on down there, the staff recommendation was closing the city operations as regular customers to the city hall will move and likely expect to be closed, and usually there would be a limited demand of city services, which we talked about, for the public other than the holidays that creates this time during this week. So, in the early weeks, the city has granted an extra day off for employees in 2002, 2006, and this situation, when this situation is created. And that's kind of what I'm talking about. I'd like to see it in the future with a plan so that we don't set up here two weeks before and say, we're gonna give the people off, or we're not gonna give them off. So with that said, council, we've got possibly three options here, and I will entertain a motion.
Sheriff, Mayor, before, before that, we know electrical's not gonna have to be out there at much, but my concerns is, is with, with health inspectors. Do they move in on Wednesday, or do they move in on Thursday?
Becky, to keep this orderly, again, would you introduce yourself with your name and your address so we can get back on track here, please?
Becky Malden, 5001 Contrary Creek, Granbury. Normally, Mr. Allen, the health inspections are done and completed the very first day of whatever the festival day is. If there are problems, if we have booths that are, that we think are gonna be in bad shape or make us nervous for the remainder of the weekend, we will do drop-in inspections. I have one health inspector, she lives near Heiko. Odds are, I'm gonna be doing these health inspections anyhow, and I'm a salary employee, so it doesn't matter. It's not gonna be any overtime.
But, but most of that, you probably could do 90% of it, 95, on Thursday.
Is Thursday the first full day?
Well, yeah, Thursday.
If they're coming in in the evening, it'll be the first full day of the event. About 9 o'clock in the morning, we'll go around and distribute permits, do the inspections immediately following that.
And you're only looking at how many hours? Would it take all day, or would it take...
Four hours, maybe.
But unfairness to you, you are on salary.
Right, but I work anyhow.
Becky, I seen you reading meters the other day, jumping out of a pickup, so I know you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Council, any more discussion?
Yeah, can we get, I'd like some clarification. The origin of this is that we need, we'd like to have more parking downtown during, on the Friday.
That, that is in the conversation. I'm, I'm hearing that, but I really believe it is to whether or not we want to give the employees another day off because of where it falls. We can accommodate parking. Now, it would help out with parking, that is just one of the things that are in the equation, but like I said, we got a bank right across the street here. They have to be open, and if people wanted to use their parking lot, they would have no choice. They still have to be open.
Then Wayne, how do you feel about this?
Well, like I said, I perceived it was a good, it's been done this way before, we've used parking as one of the reasons, okay? We don't wanna impact that, but I'd like to see employees have a forty.
And I'll give you a little history, Councilman Couch, from the corporate people and stuff. Normally, when you had a union that negotiated this, that's usually what happened. They give them the additional day off, and it was, you know, the people are gonna get the day off, and they're gonna come back and do the catch-up work, and they're gonna do the work. They're not gonna lose out on any work. You possibly could pay some additional pay on both days, as far as that goes. You could pay some additional pay on the 4th, and you could pay some additional day on the 5th when they both become a holiday. And, and that's what we were talking about here. So we have to have our managers look into it and make sure that we scrutinize that, and make sure that we don't work anybody unless we just have to, to pay holiday pay.
And it's a dead day.
Yeah, it's a dead day.
I wouldn't want to work it.
Yeah, people just don't even expect us to be open, I don't think, or even think about us being open. So, um, you know, I don't think a lot of people are going to do after July 4th fireworks that night till midnight and everything else. I doubt we'll see many people coming in here, except maybe, like she said, to walk in and get cool, or if they get, or use the restroom, pretty much, we'll see.
CVB open during that time? The end buildings, right? The gate, right?
Just the gate, right.
They got the restroom.
It's like a holiday.
I'd say I make a motion, we go ahead and do it, and...
Miss, but do which one?
Go ahead and let them have the day off, would pay. And when we do our budget this year, Wayne, I'd like for us to look at every holiday.
This is the only one we've ever asked for next, other than Christmas.
I was going to say, I remember Christmas last year, we did it, and...
Yeah.
We just put it in our budget, and now we will know it, you know, and...
We'll do the next two or three years since.
I'll be honest.
Okay, I want to clear, I want to clarify this with Mr. Allen, and we can talk about the other stuff in, in the late, but, uh, what we're looking for is to consider and approve a resolution to close City Hall on July the 5th, 2016.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Mr. Allen to close the City Hall on July the 5th. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And I have a second by Mr. Perkel. Is there any more discussion, Council?
What are we going to call this day? Is it a holiday? Is there a wording that you could use that would prevent the time and a half? Are you going to call it a comp day that they can swap or what?
It's considered a holiday. I, that's what I'm assuming. Holiday.
That's what we had planned.
Yeah. And, and what we're doing is, is if we'd have done this, here we go again, three years ago, your 4th of July holiday, just like sometimes your Christmas holiday has more than one day, your New Year's has more than one day sometimes, the 4th of July for this year will have two days off instead of one day. And it's all holiday, it's all tied in with holiday. Okay? Do I have any more discussion?
You know, Mayor Protem, I think it, it's up to Wayne and it's up, it's up to our department heads to watch the overtime.
Thank you.
You know, and, I mean, I'll be honest with you, uh, I had a business for many years, and I hated paying for a Friday, but I can't remember ever working on a Friday after Thanksgiving because people want to go out of town or whatever.